Call this meeting to order. We have all five board members present, four up here in the dais. And Ms. Sheila Jackson, the outgoing board member, is sitting on the front row, ready to turn her seat over to a new board member.[17.14][17.14](APPLAUSE). Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.[26.11][26.11](APPLAUSE). Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, I like that way I can hear the children's voices louder than everybody else's. That's good. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call this December 10th, 2012, special meeting to order. First of all, a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved and seconded, please vote. Okay, we're now going to have the swearing in of the newly elected and re-elected board members, and then there will be a reception following this meeting. We will have a reception to welcome the new and the returning board members. So, without any further ado, we're going to get started. We have one new board member, and at this time, I would like to ask board member-elect Marnie Foster and the Honorable Randah Trapp, Judge of the San Diego Superior Court, to step up to the podium for the oath of office. Ms. Foster's family is welcome to accompany her to the podium for the administration of the oath of office.[110.14][110.14](APPLAUSE).
Who are you going to hit the speakers first? That was Dorothy Smith. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is a very special, special day. And before I do the honors, there are a couple of special members, former board members, who have a few words to say before I do the honors. And at this time, I would like to call up former board member Dorothy Smith first.[196.62][196.62](APPLAUSE). The board president, I'm told.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dorothy Smith. My address is 2650 Blackton Drive, San Diego, California, 92105. I was honored to serve on the Board of Education from 1981 to 1988. I want to congratulate trustee Marnie Foster. I know she's elect, but in just a moment, she's going to be trustee. I have known her and her family for many years, and I can attest to her excellent character, her outstanding job as a parent, and her concern for the children of District E, from which she was nominated, and for all of the children of the San Diego Unified School District. Marnie will be diligent and tenacious in helping to find solutions to the needs of the children of District E and to all of the children who, and of all of the children who attend the San Diego Unified School District. Each member of this board is elected from the entire district. You're elected not only from the district from which you were nominated, but you're elected by all of the voters who went to the polls and voted in November. You represent all of the children in all of the districts in San Diego Unified. I ask you to work diligently together, to look at the needs of all of the children, and to the extent that you can raise the child farthest down, then you not only lift all of the children in San Diego Unified, but you lift this entire city, because we're depending on you to educate our children in a way to serve our city, to serve our nation, and to serve the world. I congratulate you for taking on this responsibility. I congratulate Marnie, and Marnie, I pray for you. I thank you for accepting this responsibility, and I want you to know that I will be there to support you in whatever way that I can. Thank you so much.[368.62][368.62](APPLAUSE).
Next, we will have another former distinguished board member, our newest Assembly member, and my neighbor, by the way, the illustrious Dr. Shirley Weber.[390.03][390.03](APPLAUSE).
I'm Dr. Shirley Weber, the Assemblywoman from the 79th Assembly District, and I bring you greetings.[404.71][404.71](APPLAUSE). This is quite an honor today to be here at a school board meeting. I always call school board meetings contact sport, because you know what I mean. You know what I mean. I reflected this morning, I realized it's been 24 years since I was sworn in as a board member for San Diego Unified School District. My, my, how time flies. And yet, I realized, even though it's been 24 years, those are the most important eight years of my life in terms of my service to the citizens of San Diego. And I hope you recognize that it's also important in your life. I want to congratulate Marnie, who has been a stellar citizen, and a mother, and educator, and an advocate in this community, as she embarks upon this tremendous task of serving the children of San Diego. I congratulate those of you who decided to run again, John Lee Evans and Richard Barrera, to take on the challenge and to continue the struggle with Bill Kobo, our superintendent, to make a difference for the children of San Diego, and to Scott and Kevin, who've worked so very hard to make a difference. I congratulate Sheila Jackson and her service to this board for eight years, a difficult eight years.[476.12][476.12](APPLAUSE). Serving on the school board sometimes is an unrecognized honor, but it truly is an honor and a tremendous responsibility. And I challenge each one of you to do what I tried to do every day I was on the school board, and that was to believe that every child in San Diego was my child. And I always believed that if anyone ever asked my mother, who had eight children, "Which one of those would you not teach to read? Which one of those would you sacrifice to underachievement?" And I'm sure she would have said, "What's a good percentage? Is it 70% or 50% of your children are doing well?" And she would think you had lost your mind. She'd say, "It's 100%. All of them, all of my children must succeed." And I challenge you to see the children of San Diego, the hundred-and-some-odd-thousand kids that are here, as your own children. And when they don't succeed, then you don't feel you have done your job. I want to challenge Marnie, as she enters this board, to realize that you're one of five, but you look around and you're the only African-American, and you're the only woman on this board. That's going to be a tremendous challenge, because you have some great individuals serving with you, but you're going to have the task of always being the moral force, the mind that's going to remind them regularly of experiences that they may not have, that they may not understand, and that you will have to challenge them. I did it, Dorothy did, Reverend Smith did it, we all did it. We took it as a personal responsibility to continue to make the board focused upon the issues that affected every child, every one of every ethnicity and every gender that's in this district. And that's going to be your task, and it's not an easy task, but it's an honorable task. And so I leave you with a thought that I found when I was traveling in South Africa, up in a small village, way up in, in, in a village, a school that was a Chris Hahn School, in a little town called Langa. Kids in a little tin hut were being educated every day at a tremendous rate. And they had a philosophy, and I adopted that, that's my philosophy. And it says, "If the children do not learn, it is because we did not teach them." Very simple. These were children who were orphans, who were in foster care, and they understood that if they do not learn, we did not teach them. And that has to be the philosophy of this board, that has to be your driving philosophy every day. I congratulate all of you, I will give you all the support we can in Sacramento, it's going to be a wonderful ride for all of us, and our children are going to succeed. Thank you so much.[622.04][622.04](APPLAUSE).
Before you swear in, Ms. Foster, could you introduce your family members?
Oh, my pleasure. This is my mother, Sandra Foster King, who, by the way, is a teacher in San Diego Unified and UCSD for over 30 years now, and has taken countless students across the country and even internationally to represent San Diego Unified. And my father, Howard Foster, who is also a counselor and directs a mental health system, my son Malachi Johann, my son Malcolm Josiah Abdul, and my partner and best friend, Kevin And I would just add that my two oldest children are not here because they're at college right now. My daughter's at Pepperdine, and my oldest son is at Rutgers University.[696.32][696.32](APPLAUSE). Let me get this said, because Sante, Michael Christian and Miles Joseph.[707.43][707.43](LAUGHTER).
And what a beautiful family it is. And I know that this family was very supportive in getting you to this point, and that they're going to continue to support you. I know that this community was very supportive in getting you to this point, and I know that they will continue to be supportive. And I know that your new colleagues will be very, very supportive. So this is a wonderful day. Colin Powell said, "A dream doesn't become a reality through magic. It takes sweat, determination, and hard work." And I've personally witnessed you do all of that to get to where you are, and it is such a blessing. And I am honored to perform this duty of swearing you in. We are native San Diegans, we are sorority sisters, Alpha Kappa Alpha Incorporated, we are Sisters in Christ, Christian Fellowship Congregational Church, and I am so very proud of you. And I know that you, as a mother, as a community leader, as a woman, as a professional, will serve with honor and distinction as those who have come before you did. So this is a proud moment. And I've gotten to the age where I can pass on a few pearls of wisdom, and they're not original to me, but they have stood me well. You may not always do things right, but always try to do the right thing. Sit in silence for at least 10 minutes every day. Life is too short to waste hating anyone.
That's right.
And each and every day, do something good for others. And with that, it is my honor to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I-
I-
State your-
Marnie Foster-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies-
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservations.[931.56][931.56](LAUGHTER).
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion-
And that I will-
And that I will-
Well and faithfully-
Well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties-
Upon which-
Upon which-
I am about to enter-
Upon which I am about to enter.
Ms. Jackson, would you please accompany her to the dais?
I think we should hug before every meeting.[1042.01][1042.01](LAUGHTER).[1043.01][1043.01](APPLAUSE).
Okay, everybody have a seat. Okay, see, Marnie has already changed the board.[1062.58][1062.58](LAUGHTER). Okay, I would now like to ask board member Richard Barrera and the following district students to come forward to the podium. We have Lily Shallow of Roosevelt-Ivy Middle School, Philip Voe of Central Elementary, Malachi Beatty of Edison Elementary, Jessica Robertson of Point Loma High School, and Jessie Barrera of Mount Everest Academy.[1095.92][1095.92](APPLAUSE).
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.[1118.83][1118.83](LAUGHTER).
I, Richard Barrera.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies-
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith-
And allegiance-
And allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation-
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.[1176.83][1176.83](LAUGHTER).
And that I will-
And that I will-
Well and faithfully-
Well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties-
Upon which I am-
Upon which I am-
About to enter-
Okay, we have one more person to whom we need to administer the oath of office, and we have some distinguished guests here today. I know that we have the President of the San Diego Education Association, we have some of the leaders of the California School Employees Association, we have the President of the City Council, Todd Glorious here, and we also have the person with the second most important job, just kidding, in the city of San Diego, our new mayor, Mr. Bob Filner, who is a former board president, served on the San Diego School Board, and is now leading the city of San Diego. So for me, it's a great honor to invite him to come forward, to administer the oath of office, and to say, and first, I'd like to ask you to say a few words to the community. Do you have others here? What's, by yourself?
I used to have a big family in North Chicago.[1298.33][1298.33](LAUGHTER). Four years ago, when I was elected, I had a red large family.
I have to say that, before I swear you in, you know, Dorothy claimed, no, Shirley claimed that she was sworn in 24 years ago. Dorothy didn't let on, but she was sworn in 32 years ago. But I've been sworn in 34 years ago.[1320.71][1320.71](LAUGHTER). And contact sport doesn't define it, kickboxing is more like it, or something. And Shirley, thank you for, for your quote of, "If the students do not learn, then we did not teach them." I'm going to, let's modify it slightly in the four years ahead. If the students do not learn, then we, the community, all the community, not just the school board, but the rest of us, did not teach them. And so we're going to join with the school board and with President John Lee Evans.[1352.63][1352.63](APPLAUSE). So, Mr. President, if you'll raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, John Lee Evans-
I, John Lee Evans-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance-
And I will bear true faith and allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation-
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion-
And I will well and, well and faithfully-
And I will well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties-
Upon which I am about to enter-
Upon which I am about to enter-
And I further swear-
And I further swear-[1408.63][1408.63](LAUGHTER).
That I will never be late to meetings.[1415.76][1415.76](APPLAUSE). And by the authority vested me, by the people of the city of San Diego, you are now President
I had Ms. Foster introduce her family members, and I failed to point out that my participating family member today is Melissa Marie Evans-Kobo, my daughter, who just graduated from San Diego State University.[1485.91][1485.91](APPLAUSE). And I do want to point out that our new mayor has already made many statements in favor of our educational system here in San Diego, and is really dedicated to cooperating with us on various measures, whether it's getting volunteers in the school, getting more partnerships, working together on things where we can reduce costs through transportation and joint use and other areas. So it's a real pleasure to have a real champion of education who is leading our city. Strong schools lead to strong neighborhoods, and he's placed a very strong emphasis on our neighborhoods. And it's great also to have a champion in Sacramento who has also been on the school board and will be fighting for us for what we need from Sacramento, too. So this is really a great day for all of us in San Diego.[1537.01][1537.01](APPLAUSE). At this time, if any other, the new board member, first of all, if you would like to make any comments, and then other board members can comment.
I would, very much so. First and foremost, I'd like to give honor and praise to God. I give honor knowing that the responsibility of making decisions, monitoring policies, and being accountable to a district and community charged with preparing 132,000-plus children for the 21st century and globally is much larger than any one board member. And yet, San Diego Unified School District voters decided to put a mom on board, a PTA mom, parent, teacher, administrator mom on board, and I thank you, thank you, thank you for that. And like any good PTA mom and newly sworn-in board member, I'd like to thank those who put me here. From those whose shoulders I stand, and my extended, who also happen to be my extended family, the Reverend George Walker Smith, Dr. Dorothy Smith, Dr. Bertha Pendleton, Honorable Assemblywoman, Dr. Shirley Weber, Sheila Jackson, who dedicated her last, the last eight years of her life to this work, which is significant. I'd like to thank my family and my wonderful village of supporters who are here today. I didn't mention earlier, but my grandfather, George King, who's 89 years old, and my grandmothers, who've moved on, passed on, Onita King, and Henrietta Foster, who were educators in the church and community. I already mentioned my father and my mother, Sandra Foster King. And one thing that I didn't mention about my mom and her dedication and why I'm able to be here, because of the experiences that I've had, she sold her car to make sure that I had the opportunity to live with her in Sweden when she took over a dance program. She also sacrificed a lot to make sure that I could participate in an exchange program in Mexico. And so those types of sacrifices, parents know, those are the type of sacrifices that must be made to ensure that all children have the equal opportunity to be successful, and that we demand that they are successful. So, thank you, Mom. And y'all can prata, micaletos, finska nu.[1721.21][1721.21](LAUGHTER). And my uncle, Charles Kahali Fah King, is in the audience. He wasn't there, here earlier, so wave, uncle.[1732.76][1732.76](LAUGHTER). He's a professor at City College and the founder of Harmonious Solutions. My Aunt Sherman, and of course, my children that I mentioned earlier. I'd also like to acknowledge my pastor, Reverend Lee Hill, and the church, my church members that are present from Christian Fellowship Congregational Church, my sorority members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Epsilon Xi Omega Chapter, Dr. Anthony Beebe, my president with San Diego Continuing Education, right there.[1770.01][1770.01](APPLAUSE). Dr. Brian Ellison and Bob Parker, my vice presidents, and of course, our chancellor of the San Diego Community College District, Dr. Constance Carroll. Jim Mailer, my president of the American Federation of Teachers, local 1931, and my AFT family members. And finally, I'd like to thank every organization, party, union- And finally, I'd like to thank every organization, party, union, church, parent, teacher, student that I worked with along the way. I truly appreciate you and love you. If I've missed anyone, count it to my head and not my heart. And then finally, my request, again, the responsibility of making decisions and being accountable to a district and community charged with preparing 132,000-plus children, as I stated before, for the 21st century, is global and much larger than any one board member. This means our children need all of us working together to ensure that they have a bright future, as you know. I'm encouraged because of all the people that I see in the audience that I've worked with and those who I see from parents, grandparents, and legislators that I now get to work with. And finally, I want to leave you with the words of Dietrich Bonhoeffer, the great Protestant theologian, who said, "The test of the morality of a society is what it does for its children." Let us, the village, pass the test and do great things together for our children. Thank you.
I remember the advice of the judge about we should all spend 10 minutes a day in silence. I think that's not too easy for board members as we continue on here, because we all want to talk and say things, there's a lot of important things to say here. Next, I'd like to let Mr. Barrera, newly re-elected board member after a very, very tough election. Actually, in all fairness, I was kidding about that, but the reason that he ran unopposed is because people are afraid to run against him because they know they have the support of the community and they're not going to beat him. It's out there.
So, to a new, to a new era of fear and intimidation. Pretty good election, eh? I was feeling really good about this election until just a few days ago, at which point Bob Filner passed me in total vote counts. So, that sort of was a little bit of a down. No, I just, you know, as all of the things that people have set so apart today, and you know, Marnie bringing her family here, always makes me reflect on the journey that our family has been on now for a few generations. Jesse and I just yesterday celebrated my dad's 77th birthday. And yeah. And my dad grew up in a small community in Colombia and was the first person in his family to go to the big city, to Cartagena, to go to university. And it was a huge journey, you know, leaving behind everything that he had known up until that point. And my dad became a lawyer and became a judge at the age of 28. He was a municipal judge back in his, in his community in Colombia. And met my mom, whose parents had come to this country from Ellis Island, from Europe through Ellis Island to the, to the east coast of New York. And they met and they got married, and they decided that they wanted to raise their family in the United States. And so, they, they moved to Los Angeles, and for my dad, it was again giving up everything that he had known. He didn't speak English. He couldn't practice law in the United States. He was working four jobs at once to support his family, pumping gas, doing service jobs, doing everything that he could. But my dad turned to the one thing that he knew, that he trusted, that had made a difference in his journey to that point, and that was to education. And he went back to school. He got a PhD in Spanish literature, ended up teaching for years with our assembly member, Shirley Weber, and our mayor, Bob Filner, at San Diego State. And my dad and my mom, through, you know, all of the struggles that every, every immigrant family goes through in this country, knew that they could always rely on our education system so that their kids would have a brighter future. And it's made the difference in my life. It's made the difference in the lives of my brothers. And now, it's making the difference in the lives of my, of my sons. That's what, that's the power of a public education system in a democracy. And we've got so many opportunities now as we think about going forward for the next four years, incredible opportunities, you know, especially when we think of the context of the last four years that we've come out with, come out of with, you know, constant, constant crisis. But I think if we're gonna take advantage of those opportunities, we have to recognize that our school district is more than just another public agency. Our school district has to be the organizer that builds community within our city. So, our schools themselves have got to be communities where our students feel that they're not gonna fall through the cracks, that people know who they are, love them, see the genius in each one of them, and are gonna drive them to what they can become, where our teachers and our classified staff and our principals and everybody and our parents, everybody who are involved day-to-day, see the school as their community that they own and that they take responsibility for, and that it's a strong and thriving community which can create miracles because for the student, and Georgina Barajasaguirre is here, the principal at Memorial, and Georgina, you know, has often told me the story of a Saturday morning where during a Saturday school program, she came after the gates had been locked in the morning, and a student was climbing the fence to get into the school on a Saturday morning. And Georgina asked this student, who was a high-performing student, "Why are you climbing the, you don't need to go to Saturday school, you're doing fine. Why are you, why are you climbing the fence to get into school?" And the student said, "Because the school is my community. That's where I feel safe, and that's where I can believe in myself." And so, schools need to be that community for our, for our young people and for our adults. And our schools need to be the center of our community and our neighborhoods. And as our principal Cindy Martin has said, and I've heard her say this often from her perspective at Central Elementary in City Heights, why should a student have to leave their neighborhood to get the best quality education available to them anywhere? They should never have. So, we need to recommit to make schools the center of neighborhood and to make sure that every neighborhood has a school that parents can be proud of and can feel that when they send their kid to that school, that they're creating opportunities that are beyond any of our imagination for what their, what their own children can become. And of course, as our mayor reminds us all the time, our schools need to be embraced by the entire community of San Diego. And our school district, we need to recognize that we need to do our part in building the greater San Diego community. And so, whether that is recommitting ourselves to creating the finest public education system anywhere in the United States so that the San Diego community can grow with brilliant young people who are, who are driving our, our future, or whether that means that we're connecting our students while they're in school to our community college district and our universities and our businesses and our nonprofits, or whether that means we continue to, when we go out, and I want to especially thank the voters again for reinvesting in our schools in this past election with the passage of Prop Z. Absolutely. And that when the voters of San Diego invest $3 billion in the future of our schools, that we invest back, and the 90,000 jobs that will be created over the, over the course of Prop S and Prop Z are jobs that create futures for people within our communities and especially within the communities in which our students live. We've got so much opportunity in front of us, and if we recognize that our school district can play its role in building community within our schools, within our neighborhoods, and within the broader San Diego, the possibilities of what this city can look like five years down the road, 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road are just enormous. And so, it's that journey that started for my father decades ago. That is the journey that so many of our parents have come through to create a future in this country. It's to that journey, to build that San Diego community, that I ask all of us to commit ourselves to and to create greatness in this, in this community going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera. It was a real privilege for me four years ago to, to join the board the same time as Richard, we came on together. And I would say about 90% of the time, we've agreed, almost all the time, 95% of the time, I'd say 95% of the time, we've agreed. And the other 5%, well, it turned out I was wrong, but...
I'm glad that's on tape.
We all make mistakes. But I really do believe in accountability. And we, we came on the board to do certain things, and I think we accomplished certain things, but we have a lot more to accomplish. And one of the things I did when I started in December of 2008 was to write down a statement of core values for, for a new school board member, and those values are still applicable today. And I just want to go over them and make a few comments about what we've done and what we need to do. First, I said that we're trustees elected to safeguard the education of all of the children of San Diego, that we are representatives of the people, not of the bureaucracy. We can set the direction of our schools only with the full participation of the community. That the public school system must create a level playing field for all of our children as the primary place for creating equal opportunity in our society. If we don't do it in our schools, if we don't go for equality in our schools, we're not going to get it anywhere else. That the goal of education is not only to create a prepared workforce, but citizens who are critical thinkers, socially responsible, and innovative, not just robotic thinkers, not people who would just watch the news and say, "Oh, that's what it is," but can really think critically about what's going on. In terms of creating a level playing field, for example, one of the things we did was that we said, "We're going to keep the class sizes smaller and keep the schools stable at our 29 highest poverty schools," because that's what those schools need. And so, we made a really concerted effort to make that. And one of the things that we've said all along is that equality and equity are not necessarily the same thing. We're not just gonna equally divide up the pie. We need to really look at where the needs are so that everybody has a fair shot. That the public schools belong to all of us, that we are all stakeholders, parents, students, teachers, school employees, the business community, the labor community, seniors, the entire San Diego community, and the solutions lie within our diverse communities. That our school system should model the democracy in which we want our children to live, that we will arrive at having the best schools by having democratic participation in their improvement. And one of the examples was just last week, Mayor Filner was swearing in the new leaders, the new student leaders at Central Elementary. That parents and teachers and others close to the classroom can provide the best ideas on how to succeed. We do not believe in top-down management, and we've seen a real change in that with our superintendent that we hired, Bill Koba. That to improve our system, we must be open and transparent, making meetings and deliberations available and accessible to all in terms of time, location, and meeting style. That budgeting must be an open process because it is a manifestation of our priorities. And that we must not discard what is already working as we seek ways to raise achievement levels for all students, close the achievement gap, and lower the dropout rate. That we do all of this by providing reasons for students to stay in school, including career technical programs that prepare students for the world of work and lifelong learning. And we've had a lot of big advances in terms of career technical education and college prep for our students. That the teacher is the heart of the system and the key to student success and must be afforded the corresponding respect and support. And we have to say, in the last four years, our teachers have not been given the respect and support by our society in terms of the decisions that we've been making at the state level, and we really need to keep working on this. That every employee of the district should be treated with dignity and respect, from the superintendent to the classroom teacher, from the principal to the custodial staff. That we need to have the full participation of parents as partners and voice in the school, and that we need to have fathers directly involved in the education of our children, and we should look to the entire community, including seniors, for mentors and tutors. And finally, that we need to update our schools and our curriculum for this 21st-century delivery of instruction and services, which we've done through I-21 program. That we must equip our students to navigate through an explosion of information in preparation for competing in the global economy. I would say what we've done in the last few years is we have made progress. We have made incremental gains in almost every area. What we want to do in the next four years is to really accelerate those gains. I am really happy with the composition of this board. I think we have five people who are firmly dedicated to improving the lives of the students here in San Diego and their education and the goodwill of the entire community. So, I believe that we really can accelerate those gains in the next four years, and I will report in four years on how far we've gotten on that. I think we have done a lot. There's a lot more for us to do, and we're going to get it done. Thank you very much. Do other board members want to make any comments?
I just want to say, welcome, Marnie. I think this is gonna be a great ride, and I look forward to working collaboratively with you to do everything we can to help support the students. Richard, welcome back. But most importantly, Richard, thanks for those heartfelt comments and sentiments. That means a lot to me, to, to realize that you are a real human being.
Who's been wondering for two years.
And President Evans, this evening, I'm gonna vote for you to be president again because you've been a great leader over the last year. You've done a fantastic job of balancing different ideas and, and bringing people together towards our common goal of helping improve student learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more comments. Mr. Barnett is our first taker on the 10 minutes of silence. Good, good contemplation. All right. Believe me, it won't last. Okay, we're going to move on to one business item, which is the election of officers. But first, we have one public speaker on the, regarding the swearing-in of Marnie Foster, and I'm assuming this is in support of Marnie Foster, Sylvia Alvarez, and Joelle and Archer.
Good afternoon. Congratulations to all three board members. Marnie, we, on behalf of Chapter 788, Office Technical Business Services, we want to welcome you, which is our practice. We have a little goody bag. You might find some aspirin in there, some other little things you might need, but we look forward to, to working with you this year, and best of luck. Congratulations.
And we have one other speaker on this, Joanne Fields.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Koba, President Evans, school board members returning and new, especially Marnie Foster. I want to, I'm so excited for you and having heard your speech, I've never heard that from, that motivated me so much that I wanted to walk precincts, and everyone knows I hate to walk precincts, but to hear that we have, we have a parent, teacher, administrator, one that really wants to get the community involved, to ensure that we have a 21st-century prepared student that can compete on a global level. That's what really inspired me about you running for this seat. I want to thank Sheila Jackson for, for working with the Filipino community that has been underserved for so many years, but then for Marnie Foster to pick up the ball when we had concerns that our Filipino language program would be eliminated at Morrison-Bell High School. So, thank you. I'm really encouraged because you are open to exploring... I'm really encouraged because you are open to exploring programs that are innovative and will open doors, whether if it's our students that want internship opportunities with businesses like at San Diego Met, or whether it's building a first generation of college students with reality changers. I'm so excited that you are in the position that you are. You're representing us moms and women of color, and I'm just so excited for you. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak before all of you.
And now, one item. We're going to move to the election of officers, but first we have one public speaker, Sylvia Alvarez. Do you want to come up again, or you seem reluctant? Not really.
Okay, I'm Sylvia Alvarez, chapter president, Chapter 788, CSEA. I just wanted to, on behalf of the chapter, stand in support of Dr. John Lee Evans remaining as board president this year. I personally had the opportunity to work with him closely on occasion. He's been transparent, approachable, and I think he is a man of integrity, not that you all aren't.
Well, one woman.
But we stand in support of his reelection. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think my 10 minutes is up, so... When Mr. Beiser and I joined the board two years ago, and we were discussing the office of president at that point, and Mr. Barrera had been president for one term, I felt at that time that it was important both for the continuity of the board and the community that Mr. Barrera served second term, and I believe that Mr. Evans should continue as president. I think you have done an excellent job, and I think it's important both for the community and for the board to, for the community to know who is president and who's leading it. So I will be voting for you for president. And secondly, I'd like to say, as much as I have enjoyed serving with you as vice president of the board and all the opportunities you gave me to run the meeting by...
I was never absent.
Never absent, yeah.
I am the oldest member on the board, so you have to keep that in mind, if the vice president can take over if I die.
That's true. A heartbeat away. But I think it would behoove the board to rotate the vice president's position so that, and I will be voting for Mr. Beiser for that position, who has served two years in this board as well. So I know we don't formally nominate under our bylaws. We vote for these positions, but I wanted to, I guess, in lieu of nomination, indicate what I think would be the best for proceeding for the next year, so...
Okay, thank you. And it was always interesting, in past boards, I would see sometimes there would be 13, 14, 15 ballots.
24.
24. Okay. I wasn't at that meeting. And so, which I think is why it's important for people to make comments, just as we comment on everything else. So if there are no more comments, please fill out one ballot at this point, which is just for the present. I see in our packets, we have several ballots. Can I vote more than once? Okay. It's an anonymous vote until Cheryl opens it up. Now, Ms. Ward, our board officer, will give us the tally.
All right, so the board has unanimously elected Mr. Evans as their president.
We will now observe 10 minutes of silence. Okay, we'll now move very quickly. We have put all those seats aside and be sure we recycle them. Vice president, please, any comments, any further comments by the board? Everybody's faster than me.
And the board has unanimously elected Mr. Beiser as the vice president.
Okay, and those are the last two 5-0 votes that we will see this year. But that's okay. That's okay. We'll have a good discussion. Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming here for the swearing-in and for the organizational meeting. I think we have set a very good tone. We will be having our regular board meeting tomorrow night at 5:00, and Ms. Foster will be joining us and voting with us on all the items. It's a very important meeting, and we will continue forward. So once again, thank you very much for being here. We will have a reception outside this area where we can greet each of you. Thank you so much for being here.